I'd like to call the council meeting of Monday, March 6, 2023 to order. Can I have our city clerk call the roll?
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
And Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Dugos absent tonight. Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Busque.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No, moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries four zero. Moving on for comments from the public for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. On any agenda items, you can speak at this time. You're going to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have...
My name is Ed Whittier, 234 D2 Pine Hill Circle, Green Acres, 33463. I would like to speak about the agenda on number seven. Is that okay?
Are you going to make any more additional comments? You can do it now? Is there...
Seven is public.
Seven is public hearing, so you can also speak at that time. So I would...
Okay, so this is on Agenda Number Seven.
Right, so but what I'm saying, it's a public hearing. You can speak at that time if you so wish to at that time or now. You pick the time that you want to address us.
I'd rather wait till Agenda Seven if possible.
Perfect, so if anybody else is here to speak on Item Seven, you can wait and speak at that point.
Elizabeth Larson, 231 Pine Hill Circle, and I'll speak right now. I think I'd like to know how many fires were there last year that involved hurricane shutters being closed? Does anybody have that number offhand?
Ma'am, during public comments, we do not engage in conversation.
Okay, all right, and then I'm thinking also, why can't the firefighters find a practical solution to deal with this problem? Some kind of tool or gadget? There must be something out there, and I think it's not right to inconvenience so many residents with this hurricane shutter burden. And I tell you, if I lived here six months and was a permanent resident, I would vote any one of you out that goes for this, and that's all.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any items on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Virgil Linger. I'm at 306 B1 Naughty Pine Circle. I am a retired firefighter, so I understand the problems that firemen go to in sizing up a situation. And I can tell you with today's modern technology and what's available to the firemen, they pretty much can tell what's going on inside of a building as far as a heat problem is concerned, because on each one of the fire suppression vehicles that the city has is an infrared camera. This camera is so sensitive that when you're walking across the floor, your feet make some friction, and it's so sensitive that it can look at your footprints as you go, and they fade away as they cool away. So when they're looking at a building, when they're looking at a condo unit, they can tell if there's heat inside of that building. And it doesn't matter if there's shutters up, or windows, or whatever, when the wall is a little warmer than it should be, it shows up. And I'd like to say that we... It's my impression that this law was passed in order to save lives and to make it safer for the population. But in our 55-year-old and older community, it actually creates a problem, because we have people coming down here for six months a year, like me, from the north, and it requires me to be coming into the state when everybody else is driving out of the state. Because hurricanes come, people leave, we got to come down to take care of our property. For decades, we have been able to leave in at the end of April, close up our place, and not have to worry about it. It's safer in every way for us. We don't have to worry about storm damage, and it's also... It's a security thing for making it not easily to break into. Now, if you're set on making people close up the buildings, I mean, of not allowing us to close up our buildings like we're used to, there is a way that you could solve the problem like what was already suggested.
Thank you, Virgil. Time's up.
Okay, but there is a way of using lock boxes where the fire department has access to the keys of that building. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'm going to ask you to please not... There's no need to applause, please.
My name is Herbert Salas. I reside at 215 Department D2 Pine Hill Circle, and I am of the opinion that this is being done where you might have had a very good reason to do it. It's becoming, after what I've read, more of a revenue grab than anything else. All the years I've been here, and it's over 15 years, we've never had a problem by closing the shutters. It's security for the residents. Nothing has ever happened that I know of where there's been a fire when nobody was here, and it just makes a large problem for the residents, because most of us with the shutters, we're getting a discount on our homeowner's insurance. If you force us to keep the windows open, the shutters are not being closed, and if we do not have someone that can close the shutters for us, and not everyone has a friend or a neighbor or a relative that can do it, and we have it open during a hurricane and we have damage, our insurance companies will come to us and say, "We're not covering it because you have shutters and you did not close them." What you are doing by having us keep it open and giving us a $50 a day fine for every day it's open during a hurricane period is egregious and is just strictly, as far as I see, revenue grabbing. There is no reason for them to stay open. I would like to find out why, all of a sudden, we are looking to keep it closed when there is no reason, there's never been a problem, and we really should not have to be forced to keep it open. As far as I am concerned, we are being sacrificed as non-voting residents of the City of Green Acres, because we cannot vote here, so we cannot vote you out of office if we don't agree with you. You have a captive audience. It's the equivalent of taxation without representation. We can't throw tea into the ocean, but if we all decided for one year to turn around and vote here, you might all be out of jobs. This is... It's something that you should consider. This is strictly revenue-producing, no more, no less. We endured when you built this city hall, and we had the one lane in each direction. Just driving here was terrible. We endured it, we didn't complain. What you are doing now, we are complaining about. I don't think you've ever seen anyone from our area come out to a meeting like this with the type of... I don't want to use the word vehemence, but maybe that's a good word, against the city council. We've always supported the City of Green Acres. We want to support the City of Green Acres, but you got to also look at us and respect us if you want us to respect you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Go ahead.
I'm just going to read what I have here. Good evening, everyone, by the way.
State your name and address for the record one more time.
All right, Ed Whittier, 234 D2 Pine Hill Circle, Green Acres. I'm going to run over a little couple of things that was already said, but we have owned here for 37 years, and tonight, we're just asking for some help about the hurricane shutters and the sunshade clamshell awnings, which is very important. They're a sunshade awning. It's not a hurricane-protected, which I do close in the summertime, and it keeps out the extreme heat, keeps out torrential rains and winds. We are snowbirds. If we leave the same thing that you just mentioned, if we leave the clamshells open, we're violating a condo rules and suggest a fine because they can rip off and cause damage that I am responsible for. We live on a second floor and across and access the clamshells through the inside. We also have the problem with the insurance, the same thing. I get a cut because I protect my property. If damage occurs and I don't have them protected, they don't want to pay. The other problem we got is because it is a 55-year-old community, and we do... We thought we had the right to everyone, for everyone's sake. If the awnings are down, there's nobody in the apartment. I personally would be willing to even put a symbol on the door saying that no one is not occupied and nobody is there. It's just something that we're just trying to get some sort of avenue here. If it isn't, as far as the safety of the fire department, nobody wants anyone hurt. There's no question about it. There has to be a resolution to accommodate everybody's goals. And the other thing, the condo does not allow anybody to reside in any apartment being closed up. It's not legal. We keep... If someone's closed up, they have to keep them open and not allowed to keep them closed. Please reconsider this ordinance before you vote. This is a very important situation here. I really think you should be thinking about what we're talking about. These are not the... Especially the clamshells, and there's so many clamshells throughout all the Green Acres themselves. We want a resolution to try to help everybody, and believe me, no firefighters, we don't want anybody hurt. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we are now moving on to our special business. Today, we have three proclamations. If I can have our city clerk, please read the Bike Month, March 2023 proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres proclaiming March 2023 as Florida Bicycle Month. Florida Bicycle Month features a number of fitness opportunities and events for riders of all ages to enjoy throughout the month at various parts and locations throughout Palm Beach County. And the recognition of Florida Bicycle Month will raise awareness of bicycling and ultimately promote physical activity and healthy lifestyles by elevating bicycling as a more widely accepted choice of transportation. Therefore, the City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Florida Bicycle Month and encourage all Greenacre citizens to promote safe bicycling practices on all roadways and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can have Brian Rusher, Deputy Director of Multimodal from Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, come forward to receive the proclamation?
It's a pleasure. Want to come up here? Do you want to say a few words before we take a picture? Yes, I would love to say a few words. Thank you. Just to be brief, I know that packed houses usually means you want to get down to business. Brian Rusher, 301 DeTura Street at the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency. This proclamation joins hundreds of other municipalities and the state of Florida in declaring Florida Bicycle Month during the month of March. So we appreciate the City of Green Acres taking this step while the weather is still nice, and you can get out and enjoy bicycling in the great state of Florida while we have this opportunity. And we also applaud the City of Green Acres for taking big steps and receiving $150,000 from the federal government for a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant. So kudos to the staff. Congratulations, you're doing great things, and we look forward to celebrating with you this month.
We got two more. All right, do I see Will in the room? All right, our next proclamation, it's Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. If I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres proclaiming March 2023 as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. The Let's Move initiative was originally introduced as a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in 2010, with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States due to the fact that nearly one in three children born in 2,000 or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives or will face other obesity-related health problems such as health disease, heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. Digital Vibes and Palm Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least 30 minutes a day throughout the month of March, and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website. The City of Green Acres now do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month in an urge all citizens to join us in moving to improve their fitness, mental, and overall health. Thank you.
Thank you. And is Will Romulus or anyone from Digital Vibes in the house? No. All right, I will gladly accept this on behalf of Digital Vibes. They have been doing this work in our community for a very long time. They're very active with the youth, particularly with... In the school districts, different schools, different communities out there, and their whole purpose is to get kids moving. I think they do a wonderful job. They do a lot of creative activities, and we recognize them here because of the great work and the partnership that they have with the City of Green Acres. So I gladly accept the proclamation, and we'll make sure that Will and his team receive that. Absolutely. All right, and then our next proclamation is Women's History Month. If I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres proclaiming March 2023 as Women's History Month. The National Women's History Alliance has announced a Women's History theme for 2023, celebrating women who tell our stories. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every part of our life and the nation by significant portions of our labor force working inside and outside of the home. Despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Therefore, the City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month and encourage the community to use this year's theme to guide your own celebrations. Thank you.
And tonight, we have a group of women leaders that we appreciate a lot. We have Karen Joy Nash, President of the Women's Chamber of Commerce. We also have Susan Kaplan, Vice President, and Selena Samios, Executive Director, to receive the proclamation.
So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for recognizing Women's History Month and for extending an invitation to the Women's Chamber of Commerce. We are the only chamber of commerce in the area dedicated to the advancement and leadership of women. And on the topic of Women's History Month, every March since 1996, we have been honoring women, celebrating women who stick their necks out for other women in the workplace and community, and we call these the Giraffe Awards. So since 1996, we've had over 200... Excuse me, 850 women nominated for a Giraffe Award, and that includes all 28 women for this year. We... In two days, on Wednesday, we will have our VIP celebration where we meet and recognize and tell the stories of these women who were nominated. And the week following, on March 15th, we have the awards where everyone comes in, and that's what we do, we honor the winners. So I'd like to just thank everyone for having us, and happy Women's History Month.
And I also want to recognize Selena Samios. She's also the council member of Royal Palm Beach, so thank you for being here. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. Item five, Public Hearing on Ordinance 2022-35, second reading. If I can have City Clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-35, second reading, amending Chapter 16, Article 3, District Regulations, Division 11, Commercial Intensive, Section 16-49930, to allow for outside car detailing and standalone car washes within the commercial intensive zoning district, providing for repeal of conflict link ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
And tonight, we have Karen Gardner Young, zoning administrator, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want some direction. We actually have four petitions that apply to these particular parcels. We have the Zoning Text Amendment, which is second reading for tonight, which you've heard previously at the end of last year. We have the Zoning Change, which you also heard at the end of last year, and then you have two new petitions. One is the site plan, the other one is the special exception. So I know some are two second readings, some are first readings. If you'd like, if the council would like, we can make one presentation, but we'd have to read each one individually. Two of them are quasi-judicial, the special exception, and the zoning change are quasi-judicial. Applicant is here, and I also have their presentation. So guidance from you, Mayor, if you'd like us to do it all as one, we can swear people in, and then we can go right on to the applicant's, you know, presentation and on to mine.
Yes, let's do one presentation, and then do we do the swearing in now or when we get to the quasi-judicial hearing?
Would you like to proceed?
I can do it now.
Okay, I'll read the language. Tonight, we're holding a quasi-judicial hearing on two cases on the zoning change, which is ordinance number 2022-36, as well as the special exception, Resolution 202306. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of these proceedings, which consists of the testimony at hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application or the applications, and any documents presented during this hearing. The city council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or you wish to offer written comments, you may do so when prompted by the chair. All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the cases, as I stated, will now need to be sworn in.
Those who are providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
With that, Mayor, I will turn this over to Josh Nichols, who is the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. For the record, Josh Nichols with Mint Eco Car Wash this evening with the four applications. Can everyone hear me okay? I know sometimes it's a little bit low, so... Thank you, Karen, for pulling up the presentation here. So you can go to the next slide. So as discussed, so we have four items this evening. The zoning text amendment, the zoning map amendment are two items that were previously heard and approved by this council at first reading. The two items that are new would be the special exception and the site plan. So I'll spend more time on those, but again, fairly brief in general on all items. So in the special exception and site plan, we're also approved, recommended approval from the P and Z Board and to come on to council. So you can go to the next slide. So the zoning map amendment is the change from commercial general to commercial intensive. And as you can see, the subject site there, just on the south side of Lake Worth Road, just west of Empire Way. You can go to the next slide. So I won't belabor this slide, but this basically shows in what we talked about last time, the commercial intensive is... You can go back real... Just real quick. So there are some commercial nodes within the city, and this particular piece falls directly within those commercial intensive nodes. So that was the impetus and the justification for the change in the zoning. You can go to the next slide. So this is quick project data, so it's about three and a quarter acres. We have total gross floor area of about 4,400 square feet, which is about .02 FAR, about 3% building coverage. So a very small building, but there is quite a bit of parking, as you can see. We have required 14 and we're providing 55, but that does include some of the detail and the free vacuum spaces. Again, this is an existing use. If everyone is right next to the Dairy Queen, you have the LaGrange. This is that site where the LaGrange has been closed for quite some time. You can go to the next slide. So this is the site plan. This is the color rendering of it. So we have an open space portion that's to the south portion of the site. That's to remain open at this point. We do have a small drainage, dry detention area there. You can do one click. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. So again, we do have our access from Lake Worth and also from Empire Way. One of the highlights, though, is in talking with some of the neighbors and wanted to make sure, and also code required as part of this district, is a 25-foot landscape buffer. So that 25-foot landscape buffer goes the length of the developable area along the west side of the project. You can go to another click. One more. So we also, as part of our discussions with the neighbors, is we installed an eight-foot concrete block wall. So that goes along the west property line and then comes in and goes along the south and then east. And the way that's positioned is to be on the inside of the buffer. That way, all the landscaping is toward the neighbors, so they get the benefit of that 25 feet, basically, pure of landscape. On the inside of the wall will also be ivy and small shrubs hedge, obviously to create a nice ambiance for inside the wall. Next, click, one more. So again, the code requires a max or a minimum of four vehicle queuing spaces, and one of the biggest concerns, obviously, for the car wash is to ever have vehicles out onto Lake Worth Road. So we've got a 14-car stack, and that doesn't include the bypass lane as well. So there's more than an adequate amount of car stacking to make sure that we don't have any vehicles going out on the Lake Worth Road. You can go to the next. So again, existing site conditions, it's pretty rundown, a lot of vagrants in there and just trash, and it really needs to be redeveloped. So we're excited to go to the next slide to get Mint Eco in there as soon as possible. This is a couple of the photos of the interior of their site at Southern. You can also see some site renderings that were put together. So there's... So there's the ivy on the inside and outside of the wall for beautification. I can go to the next slide. Another rendering just of, that would be looking from kind of Lake Worth Road, looking into the site. Next slide. Again, another rendering. So we had a few folks at the first, so we've been to several hearings on this through various pieces of the project. We met with everyone that was in the room that evening, so it was a handful of folks. So we met with others as well to the west of the project. And then we actually got letters of support from the two main vocal folks that were there, and they were very happy with the project as we kind of moved forward. And we were, like I said, able to get these support letters and did speak with some other folks along the street to the west there. Next slide. So again, with that, happy to answer any questions and appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you. Karen Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. As was stated, so I'll start off with the first one, which is the zoning text amendment, which the clerk read in. So the request was to change the language in order to allow outdoor car detailing. So based on Mint Eco's business operations plan, they go beyond what would be a normal car wash, where you just kind of go, you go through the car wash and then you exit. You usually have the free vacuuming. They're going to make some additional spaces to actually allow some car detailing. They're addressing the impacts of the car detailing, which is in the language of the zoning text amendment that requires them to do additional landscaping. The wall will prevent the sound, and as well as they located it further away from where the residents are located. So the first thing is, this would be second reading. You approved it as provided by staff on first reading. It was recommended approval by the Planning Board of Adjustments. It was also recommended by the Development Review Committee. We, staff is recommending its approval through ordinance number 2022-35. Please include everything in the record, in the city's file, as part of the record, and I'm here to answer any questions or comments you may have on the zoning text amendment.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, at this time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-35, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance? All right, public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2022-35 on second reading.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four, zero. All right, we're now moving on to the quasi judicial public hearing for ordinance 2022-36, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance into the, by title.
Ordinance 2022-36, second reading, approving a zoning change and official zoning map amended for three parcels of land totaling approximately 3.62 acres located on the south side of Lake Worth Road, approximately 200 feet west of Empire Way at 4840 Lake Worth Road, from a city of green acres designation of commercial general to a city of green acres designation of commercial intensive as requested by the petitioner, Spencer Nicholas, agent for the owner, Mint Eco Car Wash, providing for changes to the official zoning map, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we've already had the presentation. Is there anything else that you would like to add, zoning administrator Karen Gardner Young?
There is no changes recommended from first reading to second reading. We are recommending its approval of ordinance 2022-36 as presented by staff. We ask that the city's files be included as part of the public record.
Thank you. We've already administered the oath. We've already read the ordinance into the record. At this point in time, I'd like to ask the council to disclose any ex parte communication. I'm going to start to my left, Councilmember Busque.
I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Sluggett. We didn't really go into detail. I just told him I thought that this company would make excellent corporate partners, so.
Councilmember Diaz?
I did have a conversation with the owners of Mint Eco Car Wash, but I can base my decisions on the testimony and evidence presented tonight.
Thank you. For myself, I've had two conversations with the group, right before they were thinking about coming into the city to plan for the car wash. And after the first reading, there were some changes made to the site plan, minor stuff, but we've also went over the site plan just to understand the changes. Councilmember Noble?
No contact.
And Deputy Mayor Tharp?
No communications.
All right. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record. I know that they already did that. Do they have to do it again? No, I think we're good? All right, we've done our presentation, and at this point in time, are there any comments or questions from the council? Not seeing any. All right, like to open public hearing for, go back in my page, for the quasi judicial public hearing for ordinance 2022-36. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, please come forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. All right, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-36 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four, zero. All right, moving on to item seven, public hearing for ordinance 2022-37, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance into, by title.
Ordinance 2022-37, second reading, amending Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in general, by deleting Section 4-4 Green Acres Property Maintenance Code and creating a new Chapter 7, Article 8, to be entitled Green Acres Property Maintenance Code and amending provisions of the Green Acres Property Maintenance Code, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and ineffective date.
And we have our zoning administrator Karen Gardner Young presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of the property maintenance text amendment. Although I made a presentation in the past, I know we have an audience, so I figured I'll go through it. It's not a real long presentation. So the first thing that I wanted everybody to understand is the property maintenance code deals with conditions of existing housing and non-residential property. It moves the maintenance of an existing building and the surrounding property from an option to a legal requirement for a responsible property owner. City staff initiated this code change proactively to provide property owners, tenants, and property managers with objective and specific maintenance standards for structures and hardscape. The desired result is to keep all properties in acceptable state of repair, thereby maintaining property values. In 2019, the city adopted a property maintenance code through reference, and it was referenced in Chapter 4, Article 1, Section 4-4. However, the specific regulations were only listed in a separate document, which was titled 2019 Green Acres Property Maintenance Code, which is not posted but was available in the office of the city clerk. To ensure that there is transparency in the ability of the residents to easily review the property standards, this amendment requests that the specific regulations be added to the code of ordinances. The proposed property maintenance regulations were reviewed by the Building Division, Code Enforcement Division, Fire Department, and Legal Counsel, which resulted in the regulations not only being included in the code of ordinance, but were also being updated. The Development Review Committee met on January 12th and 19th and recommended approval. And the PZAB, because this was not an amendment that they have jurisdiction over, they did not review the petition. The city council on first reading recommended approval unanimously, but since then, we have heard back from the residents. And so we are actually recommending one change from the first reading, and the language is in front of you today regarding the shutters. So the language originally was shutters and impact protection. Hurricane protective devices in all buildings must be removed, and what was in red is it was not there. No later than 14 days after the termination of the hurricane event, watch warning actual hurricane or tornado unless another hurricane event is predicted to occur within the 14-day time period. Staff is recommending to add in the language, removed and/or opened, and that's to deal with the shutters that, you know, they can open them, they don't have to take them off. You know, usually when you take off are the metal aluminum that you actually screw into it. So it was to allow for the consideration of a different type of shutter mechanism. Staff is recommending adoption of ordinance 2022-37 as presented with staff with the one change regarding opening shutters. And Brian Fuller is here to answer any questions and concerns, or do you want to do a presentation?
Yeah, I'm going to show.
Okay, presentation. We're going to switch seats. We also ask that the city's file be included as part of the public record.
Thank you.
And our chief of fire rescue, Brian Fuller.
Good evening, Mayor and council and guests. I'm going to show you a couple of videos. One is from Orlando and one is from here in Delray Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida. There are multiple videos all over the internet. You can Google with the dangers of storm shutters, multiple communities around the country who are having deaths, injuries to both the occupants of the homes, as well as the rescuers that go into these homes. And I'll just show you a couple of these videos real quick, and then we'll go from there. Will we have sound? This is a video out of Orlando. This is a battalion chief Hollins from the Fire Safety Instructor outside of Orlando. He's speaking of some fires. There's this one here where a lady was killed. She had shutters on her home. She was occupying the home. She liked the shutters to be on the home for the security while she was there, and it reduced her energy costs because the home was dark. She perished in that fire. There's a couple other instances here where firefighters were injured, because, as you know, when there's smoke and fire, the limited visibility, even with a thermal imaging camera, when you're attempting to evacuate a rapidly expanding fire inside of a home, you could have lived in that home for 30 years, and I can guarantee you that if it was smoked out, you would not be able to find your own kitchen, even living in your home for 30 years with zero visibility. This gentleman here is an attorney. He's working with a company that is trying to design shutters that can be easily opened from the inside, make this a standard type of product on the inside, but there is nothing commercially available at this time that reduces this risk if the shutters are attached. Can't figure it out. Delray Beach, the same thing. This was just recently, the city of Delray Beach Fire Rescue is asking the community You can read the comments there. There's no immediate threat to the shutter, the shutter should come down. So these are national codes, state of Florida building codes. This is not something that we just dreamed up, and I just want to address some of the comments that were made and some of the confusion that might be out there. The storm shutters completely restrict egress into and out of every window that's covered, and no one knows where the fire will start. A neighbor or passerby will not see a fire is present before it's too late. Rescue of the occupants inside is our first priority, and then our life safety as we go in. Many, many residents leave these shutters closed while they are still home. It is false that if the shutters are up, you could assume that the occupants are not there. We find them all of the time on the home when the occupants are living in there. Many communities, the homes, share common walls and floors. These communities are at the greatest risk. The fire starts on the first floor. Those residents that are on the second floor will not know the fire is there until it starts burning through the floor or the walls next to them into their area. Just because we have not had a death due to shutters at this time does not mean it won't happen. It has happened several times around the country. Law enforcement actually says leaving the shutters on attracts thieves because they think you're not home, so they see it as an easy target. As Karen stated earlier, the language we have is less stringent than the national code, the Florida building code, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code. No one is saying you can't use the shutters. We are saying you need to remove them 14 days after a storm unless another storm is approaching.
I'm going to ask you to please keep it down. He's presenting. We've afforded you the same respect when you came and spoke. Nobody spoke when you were speaking, so please allow him the same respect and courtesy.
The 14-day period that you all had asked for, plus the additional 14-day period, is the most reasonable amount of time in Palm Beach County. Some communities require residents to take down their shutters in three days and others in 10, period, with no extension if another storm is approaching. A few have stated they did not know where this came from. We did not dream this up. This was in response to realizing the risk to this community, as it has happened in multiple communities around the country. We are simply following the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code, the Florida Building Code, Seventh Edition, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code. Our property maintenance code is identical to those three standards, with the exception of we have provided a reasonable accommodation of the 14 days with the additional 14 days, which could be up to 28 days you could have it on that. And lastly, if you're asking me as a fire chief to overlook the risk, to not learn from others' mistakes, to disregard national, state, fire, and building codes, and to needlessly risk the residents and my firefighters, then I can no longer effectively perform my duties because that's my paramount reason for existence. That is all.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Chief, if I may, I believe last time you shared a different video where you highlighted the back draft. I don't know if I'm utilizing the proper.
That is actually correct, yes, sir.
Is that something that we can show one more time?
Yep.
And can you walk us through that one more time? I understand that it's extremely hazardous for a firefighter to enter a premise under
This was my presentation the first time we had this come up. So these are the codes that we're following here. This is the Florida Fire Prevention Code, Seventh Edition. You'll see the NFPA Life Safety Code here. And this is, when you read our property maintenance code, it is almost identical to this, and it says during the threat of a storm. You can have the shutters on there, and then we have, this does not allow for a 14-day period after or a 14-day extension. You, as the city council, directed us to provide a reasonable accommodation, and that's the level of risk we're willing to assume. We have the Florida Building Code, Seventh Edition, exactly the same, during the threat of a storm. Okay? They have to come off. Florida Fire Florida Fire Prevention Code, same thing. Talks about means of egress to the facilities. Now, some in previous presentations had said, well, can I leave one off of the main master bedroom and then maybe the kitchen and then maybe take the one off the front door? We never know where the fire is going to start. You simply cannot know where that's going to start. Now, we go through the maintenance code. I'll get to that video that you talked about. And this is the backdraft. So what occurs when you shutter your home is you make it airtight. Fire needs oxygen to survive. So when a fire starts in a home that's boarded up or shuttered up, it starts. If someone sees some smoke coming out or the smoke detector activates, we're going to respond. When we get there, okay, this is simulating a property that's fully boarded up, the door and the windows. And there's a small fire on the couch there that started. And you can see on the right there, there's very low oxygen. We can't see in this room. And when we arrive, if the smoke detector is activated, somebody thinks there's a fire, if the resident above in the community says that they can smell smoke or they see smoke or heat, we don't know if anybody's in there. Like I said before, many, many residents, there are quite a few that do comply, and as soon as we open that door, it causes a backdraft. This is the most likely scenario that will occur.
Is that because when you open, there's new air or oxygen coming into the?
Yeah. You supply the oxygen to the fire it's been waiting for. So those superheated gases are at the ceiling. That smoke that you saw up there is very, very hot and all it's doing is waiting for oxygen to be introduced. So it eliminates the secondary means of egress for occupants. Okay? It increases the potential for the flashover and backdraft conditions. It limits visibility for firefighters and the building occupants. It increases firefighter injuries during fire suppression and it's difficult for us to determine if the structure is occupied. You can put signs on the outside. People leave the signs up. They forget to take them down. There's been a number, a number of communities who have tried signing an affidavit that you're going out of town and that you're going to have somebody watch your property. It has not ever worked. There hasn't been a community that has come up with anything. I am open to any ideas that someone might have, but many communities have tried this and it has failed and you can see the consequences if it does.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Tharp?
So here's my thoughts. At no point up here can I sit and, we ask our fire rescue personnel to do a lot and to increase that danger. We do everything we can to mitigate the danger that we can because these are the men and women running into the building when everyone else is leaving. Increasing, by leaving shutters up and increasing the likelihood that one of our fire rescue personnel could get injured or even worse, perish over someone who is inconvenienced by raising and lowering, opening and closing the shutters, I have a tough time with. We've got one expert in the room, and I say that, and no disrespect to Chief Conn's and to everyone else, but Chief Fuller, you're on the stand here. You're our expert and we got to rely on your input and follow your recommendations. So I think that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz and then Councilmember Woske.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to understand and make sure that I'm understanding what's before us this evening. So if I'm understanding correctly, this code already passed in 2019.
Correct. There was this language, actually, the language was even stricter in the original 2019 regarding the shutters.
So what's in front of us tonight is a yes vote would add the property maintenance standards into, it's already passed, but it would add the verbiage into the code for transparency. A no vote would just not add the verbiage into the code for transparency, but it would not rescind the fact that that code is already in place.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Could you put that language back on the screen? Councilmember Woske?
Just adding on to Deputy Mayor Tharp's comment, there, I have never seen so many firefighters here at a meeting and I think that shows that they really support this and that this is really important to them.
Councilmember Noble?
I've never seen so many citizens here, which means that this issue is very important. I may be controversial in what I'm going to say, but I think I want to get the message We've all lived here for many years and lived without this. That doesn't mean that that's good. However, maybe we could postpone this for another year or so. Maybe we can set up a committee to review whether there's another alternative to this issue. This is a very important issue. If we have hundreds of people here today, this represents thousands of people throughout the city. And I'm getting their message. And I think we have to review this seriously. There's an issue here that's disturbing our residents and I don't know whether it's impossible to correct, but I think we should attempt it and I think for the moment, I think I would suggest that we postpone the necessities of closing windows and et cetera that are being discussed.
All right. At this point in time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-37, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward. In favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Anne Catteray, 334.
Were you talking in favor or in opposition?
In favor. 334 Naughty Pine Circle, B1. I would like to speak in favor for this because, for two reasons. We all have property maintenance and appearance standards and a boarded-up community looks terrible. So from that standpoint alone, I think it's worth considering. For those of us who live in our communities year-round and we live with boarded-up homes all around us, it makes us a bigger target for crime. They're not going to break into the units that are fully boarded up because they can't get in, but knowing I'm a single person on a single side of a building without any neighbors who might hear me, I think this is an issue. But I think the real issue is that convenience, the history of what we did before, and whether we have help or not, how old we are, is immaterial. The point of this is to protect us or not protect us, and if we have the means to have a second home, we should have the means to maintain it as if we lived in it 365 days a year. That is what is expected of any citizen who owns property in Green Acres. And I think we should think about that before we start making exceptions for convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. How many cars do we have in opposition?
We just have two more left that I have.
We have two?
I just only have two left that I have.
Okay, can I get those? All right. I have two individuals that wish to speak during this item. In opposition, I have Herbert Salas. I apologize. And then immediately after Herbert will be Lawrence Reed.
In response to what the fire commissioner, whatever, I didn't get your right title. I'm sorry. When we are closing our shutters, which lock from the inside, they don't lock from the outside, it signifies that we've left for the period of time, my case, six months, most of us, close to six months. At that point, you would know that there's nobody in there. Soon as we get down, everyone opens them up. None of us want to be in an enclosed atmosphere, forgetting fire, just the idea of it being enclosed and dark. That's number one. Number two, we, by putting up the shutters, we've signed a contract, so to speak, with our insurance company that we have protection for hurricanes, tornadoes, whatever, and we have them closed during that period of time. By having them open, and we can't always get somebody to close them for us, even though we're six-month residents, and yes, we do have two homes, but some of us can't afford to get someone that we can trust to go inside to close them up. We will not be covered by our insurance. That causes a problem then. We've signed a covenant that we have this protection, we won't be using it. Therefore, if we're not using it and we're being negated in our insurance by the insurance company, our only recourse is possibly to have a class action suit and sue the city of Green Acres that forced us to keep it open if we can't come down here. We don't want to have these type of problems. By keeping them closed, yes, people would know we're not there, which A is a plus for the fire department. They can, if they want to break them open if there's a reason, fine. It's never happened all the years I've been here and we've been coming down here close to 40 years owning and visiting our family. It is not the type of thing that we should have to do and worry about having it opened during the potential of a storm when we might not be able to get anyone to close it. It is a hardship on many of the people. I'm maybe a little bit younger than some of our other residents, but a lot of them really have no way of getting anyone to close them. And this is something that you really should consider. We've never had a problem. It means we're not there if they're shuttered, if they're closed, and they are not boarded up, as the young lady said. They look okay. They don't make the place look abandoned. All they're doing is protecting the property when we are not here. It is something you should really think about long and hard. Thank you.
I have Lawrence Reed.
Excuse me. Lawrence Reed, 239 D1 Pine Hill Circle. First, I would offer a suggestion and agree with Councilman Noble. What's so terrible about putting this off another year and having some residents on this committee beside you people? This community and 55 and older communities respect our firemen, our policemen, and our veterans more than any other group of people in this country. And all you have to do is turn your TV on to know that's the truth. A lot of our residents have clamshells. They are not hurricane shutters. They're for a different purpose there. I personally have hurricane-proof windows, but I have clamshells to keep closed for the sun and so forth. Does this include clamshells?
We're not.
Does this amendment include clamshells being closed? And if I have them open, how open do they have to be? These are sun shutters. They're not hurricane. And nothing has been explained to any of us and soon some of us will be going home. And we need to know, why do they have to be open if you're going to enforce this? I would say, do your jobs, involve your residents. They're the people who elect you and hear what they have to say. You've put it off since, what, 2019? Would it cause any problem a little later? They put it off another year and involved some residents in this. And I don't know why you wouldn't do that at all. And explain, how far do the hurricane shutters, you change, have to be open? How far do the clamshells, are they even included in this? And for most of the residents in our community, they have hurricane-proof windows. So you're not going to know a lot more anyway, should the shutters be open. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all the.
That's all that I have.
All the oppositions? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to close public comments on ordinance 22-37, second reading. All right, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-37, second reading.
I'll second.
Who'll second?
I did.
All right. I have a motion made by Council, Deputy Mayor Tharp, seconded by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let the record reflect that was a three-to-one vote. All right, moving on to item eight, public hearing for ordinance 2023-01, second reading. If I can have our city clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2023-01, second reading, amending Chapter 16 zoning regulations, Article 6, sign regulation, Division 5, sign regulation by zoning district, Section 16-983.
Please exit quietly, please.
Identification signs to clarify the maximum sign copy area providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and ineffective date.
Should we pause 30 seconds?
Austin?
This is unbelievable. An embar-
Do we need to read that into the record again? Are we?
Want me to read it again?
Attorney Tercivia? Do we need to read that into the record again or are we good? We're good? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to invite zoning administrator Karen Garner Young to do her presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of the Identification Sign Zoning Text Amendment. Previously, we provided a presentation. I'm more than willing to do it again. Basically, the intent of this amendment is to address the fact that we inadvertently forgot to include the identification sign copy area. So we're just putting it in whatever it was previously before. We're not making any changes to the square footage that was previously in our code. We just need to make sure we put the language in because we did a complete rewrite of the sign code. So we're human and sometimes we make a mistake. So we're trying to correct that. So we are recommending approval of ordinance 2023-01, ZTA 22-18. It was reviewed by the Development Review Staff, which recommended approval. The Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments also recommended approval. And on first reading, the council also recommended approval. We ask that all documentation be included as part of the public record and I'm here to answer any questions or comments the staff, the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for zoning administrator? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-01 on second reading.
All right, I have a motion made by-
Second.
Yep, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Buscay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. Moving on to item nine, quasi-judicial hearing for resolution 2023-06. If I can have our city clerk, please read the resolution by title.
Ordinance 2023-06 approving the petition for special exception to allow standalone car wash in a commercial intensive zoning district located at 4840 Lake Worth Road, as requested by the petitioner Josh Nichols, agent for Mint Eco Car Wash, providing for repeal of conflict and resolutions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And I know the presentation was already made, is there anything else that we'd like to add? Zoning Administrator Karen Garner Young.
Just want to note for the record that staff did review the criteria in order to approve a special exception. The need for this was because car washes are not permitted as of right because of the potential impacts that come from such an operation, they're required to go through a special exception. The special exception before you today is only applicable to the applicant and is only applicable to the car wash use. So if there was another special exception that wanted to come in, they would have to come in as if it was fresh. We are making no changes to what was presented in front of the Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments. We do feel that the criteria for a special exception approval has been met by the applicant, and we are recommending its approval of resolution 2023-06, SC 2203. Please ask that the file be included as part of the public record, and I'm here to answer any questions or comments you may have, as well as the applicant.
Thank you. All right, we have read the instructions on the quasi-judicial hearing, we have administered the oath, we have read the resolution by title. At this point in time, I'd like to ask council to disclose any expert communication. I'll start to my right, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
No communications.
Councilmember Noble.
No contact.
Mayor Flores, as I stated earlier, I met before the project came to us, and then between presentations to go over the site one more time. Councilmember Diaz.
As mentioned earlier, I did meet with the owner of Mint Eco Car Wash to go over the site as well, but I can base my decisions on the evidence and testimony presented tonight.
And Councilwoman Buscay.
As I said before, I had a brief conversation with Jeff Sluggitt. We didn't even discuss the resolution. I did just comment that I thought that they would make wonderful corporate partners.
All right. The applicant has already made their presentation, our staff has done their presentation. At this time, at this point in time, council, is there any questions for staff or the applicant? Councilmember Noble.
Has there been any discussion on how many car washes we want to have on Lake Worth Avenue?
I have not had a discussion with anybody in particular in regards to that. I mean, obviously, the applicant has the opportunity in which to request, as long as they meet certain distance requirements, which is what we put in, not this zoning text amendment, but the previous zoning text amendment, when we were talking about these standalone car washes, because they were only permitted as part of an existing gas station. So they'd have to meet at least that distance requirement and come before the council under a special exception in which you would have the right in order to determine whether you felt it was appropriate.
In your department, you don't make a determination whether there could be too much competition? You know, there's another third car wash, another quarter of a mile up the road.
Well, we do, I mean, from the staff's perspective, we review the code. We are regulatory, and we determine what criteria is located in the code that we want to make, we make sure it is in compliance with. And the only one that has regarding that is the separation distance. The applicant certainly can be here tonight if you'd like him to address whether he feels that the market is too full of car washes, certainly he can address that if you'd like him to come forward to the podium and discuss that. I'm assuming, and I'm not the property owner, but I would assume he wouldn't open up a business that he don't think is going to be successful. But having said that, I'm not the one who's making the request, we're just looking at from the regulatory, and they do meet the regulation requirements for the issuance of a special exception.
I am not going to ask them that question.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Before we get to the site plan, I know that's coming soon, I just want to, A, thank you guys for engaging the community, working with them, making the adjustments necessary. It's the way a partnership should be, so thank you for that, and that's all that I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so this is a resolution. Is there a motion?
No, it's public.
Is it?
Number nine?
I'm sorry, I skipped one, I apologize. So quasi-judicial hearing, I'd like to open public hearing for 2023-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, public hearing is now closed.
Move approval of resolution 2023-06.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four, zero. All right. Moving on to resolution 2023-07, if I can have our city clerk, please read the resolution by title.
Resolution 2023-07 approving a site and development plan to allow for standalone car wash in a commercial intensive zoning district located at 4840 Lake Worth Road, as requested by the petitioner Josh Nichols, agent for the contract purchase, Mint Eco Car Wash, providing for repeal of conflict and resolutions and providing for an effective date.
And we have a zoning administrator, Karen Garner Young.
Thank you, Mayor. As was stated, this is a request for site plan approval for a standalone car wash. Location, as previously stated, and in front of you is Lake Worth Road and Empire Way. It's actually three parcels that are under consideration. It's phased. So the first phase is the work is going to be done at the top portion of the property closest to the Lake Worth Road, and they'll leave the back area predominantly open. One of the items that, when we were looking at the site plan request, is we wanted to make sure that there was at least a buffer in between the two phases. We didn't want it to be a permanent, because we don't know what's going into the second phase, but we wanted to make sure that if for any reason that turns out to be the dividing part, we wanted to make sure at least there was some buffering located within that. As stated, they are providing 55 parking spaces, which is well above the code requirement. It's 4,414 square feet of car wash. They're doing the landscape buffers, the six-foot masonry wall we talked about, and they are accessing through Lake Worth Road and Empire Way. As Deputy Mayor has stated at a previous meeting, there were several residents who did show up. They indicated their objections to the operations of this facility. The applicant did meet with them, and that was two of the letters from the presentation from the applicant that you saw tonight indicating that they are now in favor of the project. The lot area does meet code, the lot width did not. It's 140 linear feet, it's required to be 200 feet, but they went in front of the Planning Board of Adjustments for a variance, which was granted. So they are deemed to, lot width then meets code. The yard, the floor area height, parking landscaping, all meet code requirements. They were required to obtain outside agency approvals, which includes FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, since they're on Lake Worth Road. They were also required to attend the Health Department, Palm Beach County Water Utilities, Lake Worth Drainage District. So they got all of their outside agency approvals. All car wash facilities will be inside, except for the vacuuming and the car detailing. Some of them highlighted the conditions, because there's like 26 of them. One is that we'll be required to pay fees to our public arts program, our tree dedication program, and our impact fees. As stated, they did receive outside agency approvals, South Florida Water Management District, Lake Worth Drainage District, Palm Beach County Water Land Development, FDOT, and the Health Department. And we do have site improvement requirements, we require their utilities to be underground, they're constructing the masonry wall, we ask them to keep existing trees if at all possible, and we are making sure that they are going to have a bike rack so that if any of the employees want to have the ability to have, you know, travel for their health as well as for the health of the city, they have that opportunity. We have reviewed the conditions of approval with the petitioner, and they had no objections to the conditions. The Development Review Committee did meet on September 9th and the 16th. Any comments were incorporated into the staff report. As stated, the PZAB approved the resolution 2023-07 with the 26 conditions as outlined in the staff report that was presented to the city council. Staff is recommending approval of resolution 2023-07, as presented with the 26 conditions as outlined in the DRC report and recommendation. We ask that the file be included as part of the public record, and the applicant as well as staff are available to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the council? All right, this is a resolution, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make motion to approve resolution 2023-07.
Second.
All right, how about a motion made by Councilwoman Buscay, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four, zero. All right, moving on to our next item, quasi-judicial hearing, public hearing for ordinance 2023-03, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2023-03, first reading, approving a zoning change for six parcels of land totaling approximately 7.9636 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jod Road at 6492, 6350, and 6323, Lake Worth Road and 4148, 4080, and 4020, Jod Road, from a Palm Beach County zoning designation of general commercial to a City of Green Acres zoning designation of commercial intensive, as requested by the Planning GIS and Engineering Division, providing for changes to the zoning map, providing for repeal of conflict and ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And we have our zoning administrator, Karen Garner Young, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is the first reading of the Lake Worth Plaza West Al Parcels zoning change. As you know, this property was recently annexed into the City of Green Acres. As a result, we need to apply not only the zoning change, which we have on this petition, but the next item you will hear is a land use amendment, which we also need to change. So the zoning designation from Palm Beach County is commercial general, we are recommending to change it to the city commercial intensive. And you might want to ask, because we have a commercial general zoning district, but the Palm Beach County has more commercial divisions, you know, zoning designations. So their commercial general actually doesn't match our commercial general, their commercial general matches our commercial intensive. So that's why we're recommending the commercial intensive. We have, these are the six sites. As you recognize, last year, we actually annexed the main portion of the Lake Worth Plaza West. That's where the, the, just went blank, the Marshals and all of those are located, the main area. So these are the Al Parcels. So there's actually six of them. There's the Animal Hospital, you have the CVS, there's several banks, and then there's the shells, the gas station across the street. These are, not only do we need to do the change because we annexed them, but this will actually close out an enclave that we presently have. The enclave being, meaning that services need to be provided by somebody else that has to go through the City of Green Acres to provide that service. And typically, we try to avoid that, not only by our statute, but also by state statute. So these are the six sites, where you see it in white. This is the existing zoning. You can see the CI is the peach kind of color, and CG is the red. If you approve, and again, this is only on first reading, we have to bring it back for second reading, you will see that it will look all peach. So it actually, this shows you how it is consistent with the surrounding areas, it is, we don't expect any changes or any impacts based upon the fact that they're not changing the use, right? They're keeping the same uses they have now, they're just going from being in Palm Beach County to being into the City of Green Acres. We have, staff has reviewed all the criteria for the zoning change. We feel that the petitioner has met the criteria for the approval of the zoning change. This is actually a staff-initiated change due to the annexation. Reviews and recommendations, the Development Review Committee met on January 12, 2023, no objections were received. Recommendation of approval was received by the Planning Board of Adjustments, and the staff is recommending approval of ZC 2203, ordinance 2023-03. As presented by staff, we ask that our file be included as part of the record, and I'm available to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. There, there's no applicants, correct?
That's correct. We're actually the applicant, which is not unusual for cities, when you have property annexed in, that we become the applicant.
Okay, so we have done the staff presentation. At this point in time, are there any council questions? Councilmember Noble.
Just to make a comment, your presentations are excellent. I want to commend you. This is the best we've ever had. It's very clear and easy to comprehend.
Appreciate it.
It's all peachy.
That's what I was going to say.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I couldn't have planned that if I tried.
All right, seeing none, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance, for public hearing, ordinance 2023-03. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-03 on first reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Noble. I swear, I will give you the next one, Councilmember Buscay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is four, zero. All right, moving on to public hearing, ordinance 2023-04, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2023-04, first reading, amending the future land use map of the future land use settlement of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of six parcels of land totaling approximately 7.9636 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jod Road at 6492, 6350, and 6323, Lake Worth Road, and 4148, 4080, and 4020, South Jod Road, from a Palm Beach County designation, commercial high, to a City of Green Acres designation of commercial, as requested by the Planning GIS and Engineering Division, providing for repeal of conflict and ordinances, severability, transmittal, inclusion, and a comprehensive plan and an effective date.
Thank you, and we have our zoning administrator, Karen Garner Young, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is the companion, as I indicated, this is the land use designation. Every parcel in the city has a land use designation and a zoning designation, and the two must match. So if you have a land use designation of commercial, you can't have a zoning designation of residential, so we need to make sure that they match. So in this regard, as we already talked, we had the zoning change that we were recommending. Just to be a little different, I put stars on the parcels just to highlight them. But I'm back to my peachy colors again. So CM is commercial, so we actually have commercial surrounding. Again, when we annex in, you now see how much commercial really is around. The city is requesting this because, again, it was annexed into the city. It does contain a commercial high designation from Palm Beach County. The City of Green Acres only has one designation of commercial, which is commercial. And so we need to go ahead and make this change in regards to the recent annexation. Staff has reviewed the application in regards to compatibility, concurrency, and consistency. As was previously stated, we're not changing any of the uses. We were able to provide everything in the past, we're now just going to change. So Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office may be a different district. We have the Green Acres Fire Department that'll answer, but again, most of the other items, it's already developed, we're not doing anything different that wasn't there already. By the map, I showed you that it's consistent with the surrounding area that is already predominantly commercial. So we did provide this to the Development Review Committee on January 12, 2023, no objections. It was also heard by the Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments, unanimous approval of the petition. And then the property owner, by the way, even though they're not the petitioner, I have gone around to the different sites and advised them that they were annexed into the City of Green Acres, we talked to them about it, so they are aware of the fact that we were going through on this land use, as well as the zoning change. Staff is recommending approval. It is a small-scale land use amendment through CPA 2203 and ordinance 2023-04. We ask that our file be included as part of the public record, and staff is here to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Any comments or questions from the council? I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2023-04. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. This is your chance, this is your chance.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2023-04 on first reading.
Second.
All right. All right, I have a motion made by Councilwoman Buscay, second-
Motion to approve ordinance number 2023-04 on first reading.
Second.
All right. All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries four, zero. Woo, we made, we made it.
That's all.
All right, we don't have any discussion items. We are now moving for comments from the, from, from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and city clerk and city manager and city attorney. My name is Brett Brown. I'm a past president of the Historical Society and I'd like to discuss a couple of things that I'm inquiring about. On November of 2019, I took over as President of the Historical Society due to the health of the prior president. When I did some research on the Historical Society, I found out that they had lost their 501(c)(3) status. They had not filed income tax returns for three years and there were no members and meetings prior, for the prior two years. I didn't know it was as bad as it was, but I volunteered to take over. I was asked by Estelle to take over and it took me many hours to reconstruct an organization and get approval from the IRS for a 501(c)(3). Ever, let's see. When we took over, when I, excuse me, when I took over and started volunteering, I realized that the space that is in our lease for common area is not available for us to be able to use. It's a sad situation because it caused much contention between the COP program and the We were told not to overload the Wi-Fi system by the COP Director, whoever, whatever his position is. So the city was kind enough to hook us up to a, our own Wi-Fi at, at the city's expense and, and of course, we appreciate that. We had a request from the city to explain why we had display items in the common area and I responded by saying that the COP program also has items on display and there should be no issue with us having items on display. I did explain the contentious relationship that we had with the COP program and I was told that a meeting would be set up between the PBSO and the Historical Society. I had requested that a portlet be installed because there was the sewage or the septic tank issue and we had no plumbing. We had no water, we had no restrooms, so I had requested a portlet. Lo and behold, the locks kept being changed on the portlet. And so I inquired with the city because of course, that means that any of the volunteers with the Historical Society or myself, we could not use the portlet because we have no access to the key because we're supposed to stay out of that area. We had to purchase, or I had to purchase on my own, a porta potty to be used in the museum, which is, I have to tell you, it's very embarrassing to have to use something like that when someone, when there are several people that have keys and they can just walk in. It's, it's not a good situation. I asked about the keys while they were being changed and Carlos had told me that he would check into it. Let's see, and finally, they had a training program and I've relayed this on to our city manager when I gave her the tour and the gentleman in the office requested that I no longer come into that section of the building. And I responded by saying, I just came in to say hello. It's outrageous. It's absolutely outrageous.
Right.
Moving.
I, I think, time's up and, and I think you've heard out some things that are of concern, probably at least to me, things that I probably didn't know.
Mayor, Mayor, I understand, but at my age of 75, now have to put up with this contention, it's, it's pathetic. It's childish, it's immature, and the, the other section I was going to read was about the City of Green Acres itself. The other program, or the other part that I was talking about was the COP program. So, you know, if, if my time is up, my time is up.
City manager, I, and I don't know how about, how the rest of the council feels, but I think there were some concerning items that were stated there and I, I think we should probably have a joint meeting between the COP program, the city, and, because we, we did make a commitment to, to the Historical Society. So I just want to make sure that, I, I don't understand why people are using portlets, to be honest.
Well, it's a non-issue now, to be honest with you.
Well, but I, I still want, I still want to have the conversation and have the meeting. So if the council has any objection, please let me know.
None.
Okay, I think we, we'll set up that meeting between the, the three parties.
Yeah, and I'm done. I've given up my responsibilities. I'm not going to put up with it anymore. Thank you.
Is there, is there someone else that we should contact for that meeting or?
Well, I, I, I asked.
Yes, we do have a contact. We have a contact, yes.
Excuse me. Did I have the floor?
Go ahead, Brett. Thank you, Brett. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
If I can ask one question.
Go ahead.
Do you employees stop disconnecting our security cameras?
We'll, we'll bring that up at the, at the meeting. Sir?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I hear you.
My name is, my name is Frank Madrano and I live in the original section of Green Acres. And I just wanted to raise a concern that, that I noticed actually for, for a very long time, I just never got the nerve to come up here and say anything. And that's the, the speed, the school zone for LC Swain. I believe I sent you guys an email about two months ago. And what's happening is, we need more signs there. If you're a resident of the original section of Green Acres and you go down Swain Boulevard heading toward Lake Worth Road, there's only one sign on that very corner. And that, that one sign reads like a paragraph. So you got to read like four different things and then you have to initiate that sign to Lake Worth Road. It, it's not for, for Swain. So you got to, you got to think ahead of time and think, okay, this, this is for Lake Worth Road. So anyway, so if, if you're going down Swain Boulevard to Lake Worth, you go to make that right onto Lake Worth, you got to wait for all the pedestrians and stuff, the, the kids, the crossing guards. There's a lot of commotion there going on and you could, you could easily, easily miss that sign. You got your vendors from, from Ed's store, you got your vendors from the farm store, you got two driveways before that. You got your, your workers with the trailers, the box trucks, and any one of them could, could impede your vision of that sign. So that one, if you miss that sign, you're, you're done. You're going to get a speeding ticket when you make that right-hand turn. And that right-hand turn is a good, I'd say it's an easy football field. I mean, it's from Swain Boulevard all the way to the Nissan, the four-stage building, the garage building, there's no sign stating that it's a school zone. So as a, that affects the residents of Green Acres more because we don't get the blinking lights like, like Lake Worth Road does. One block prior, you get blinking lights and you get about, you get about 12 signs saying you're in the school zone. For some reason, once you pass away, there's nothing. So, so yeah, so, so there's, we need more signage there. And then also, I think what's being missed here is, we don't, we don't want any speeding in the school zone. Every time there's a speeder, that's a time that our kids have been put in danger. So for, for however many tickets have been issued, that's a time that our, our kids have been put in danger. So I believe the, if we put more signs there, it's going to be less speeding and less time the kids will be put in danger. And not only that, it'll be less, you'll need less police officers to enforce the law there. When I went there to go speak to the police officers, there was two, two or three there checking, checking radar. And within the 10 minutes I was there, they pulled over four people. And that, that's only 10 minutes, you know. And, you know, I told them, I said, hey, you know, if you get the right signage, maybe one, one police officer can do the job and that'll free up another police officer to go help us out somewhere else.
Thank you, Frank. I appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Bradley Stenstrom. I live at 5401 East Bay Drive. I'm in Rainbow Lakes, Mayor. What I want to talk about is, I'm a US Navy veteran. I was actually involved with the, the Veterans Memorial that we have in front of the, the building right here. One of the things, I was just listening to Brett talk about the Historical Society. One thing, I like to volunteer my services to help with these Historical Society. One thing I had talked about when Suzie was actually running for her council position here was something called the Hometown Hero Project. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but some cities have this where they put a banner out on the streets talking, it's in honor of a veteran for that city. I have done some research on my own, researching some of the veterans from Green Acres and I've picked out about a half a dozen names of some veterans from the Vietnam War, from Green Acres, that I would like to start with those veterans so we could honor on banners. And there are some companies that actually make these banners. And like I said, I volunteered to help with that project. And anything else that I could do to help this city, I have been a resident of Green Acres for 20 years and, and anything that I could do to help with the city and do whatever needs to be done, I'd be happy to do it. I know, I know I still have a minute and a half left, but some of you do know me. You know, John knows me, he's one of my neighbors and, you know, I've known Joel since he became mayor and anything I could do to help, I'm, I'm at your service.
First of all, thank you for, for volunteering and stepping up. That's, that's truly hard to find these days. Thank you for your service and I, you know, I think this Hometown Hero Project might be, might be something interesting. I don't know how the council feels here that if this is something that we want to take a look at and perhaps bring back for discussion at a future meeting and then we can link up with Bradley so that we can perhaps make this a reality.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bradley. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, public comments are now closed. Moving to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, we do have a community conversation coming up on Wednesday from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. The topic this week is going to be substance abuse and that is at the community center. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
City Attorney.
Oh, sorry, City Attorney's Report.
Don't report, Mr. Mayor.
I was going to go right down the line. For the mayor's and city council's report, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
I'd like to bring up an item for discussion at the next meeting regarding homeowners' property insurance. Not much we can do, but it's a discussion we need to be, we need to start and I'll, I'll give my personal information here. My, I got my renewal notice from my current insurer. I went from $3,986. The upcoming renewal, $8,254. Over 100% increase, it's going impact all of us. I'd love to have a discussion on what we can do, starting here, to have the state really address this issue. And that's all I have.
Yeah, if we can, since, since this is being asked for, to be brought up for discussion, if we could get some legal understanding of.
What we can do.
Well, not, not just what we can do, of what occurred, because I think that just, it's ridiculous and not only, at least you got an increase, a lot of other people are just getting flat out denied, dropped. So just a little bit more than, a little bit more meets to that discussion if we can have some.
Look into that.
Thank you.
Do we need more than the 20th or should we schedule for the 3rd of April?
I, I would defer that to our city manager based on her research.
Give us, give us an opportunity to have a conversation about it and then rather than picking a set date, we can figure out on an upcoming agenda.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Deputy Mayor?
Nothing else.
Councilmember Noble?
Nothing.
Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you. I just have one thing, a quick update on the matter with the redistricting in the City of Green Acres and our students. Board member Ayala fought very hard for us. Unfortunately, it was not the outcome that we would have wanted. However, we were able to, we got a few things in there. Our, our rising juniors will be able to stay in the schools that they're in and we were able to get River Bridge rezoned back to Central High School. So it's, we'll take the wins and we'll keep moving forward. But along that line, one thing I wanted to bring up for my fellow council to maybe consider, I don't know if it's a discussion item or some direction, I would like our city to consider developing an education advisory committee. Many cities around us do have them and they do prove very effective with making sure that matters such as this do not blindside us. So I will defer back to the rest of the council. I'm not sure if it's something that should be discussion or consensus.
Yeah, I think we should bring it up for discussion, perhaps at the, the next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Busque?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
All right, for the mayor's report, I do have a few things tomorrow. I know there's a group of us heading up to Tallahassee. Obviously, septic to sewage is something that we have been fighting for. We have a bill once again. So I will go up to Tallahassee again to, it's Palm Beach County Day, so a lot of people in the county go, go up and meet with our state representatives and myself, I believe, councilmember Diaz, our city manager, and our POA are, will be attending. So I look forward to, to doing that and always representing the City of Green Acres in Tallahassee. Especially love when they break out into song. So they've heard of, of Green Acres and so it's, it's really funny, that happens a lot, by the way. I, I wanted to bring up the audio issues that we've been having nonstop at these meetings. I, I think that needs to be fixed, addressed immediately. I have no idea, do we need wireless speakers or something? But we need to be able to hear these, especially when we're doing presentations and there's, there's a group here. So would like us to get to the bottom of the audio issue and we should test it before we have council meeting, so. And then the turning on to school zones, which Mr. Madrassa, Madras?
Madrano.
Madrano brought up. I think this is something that I had previously brought up. This not only occurs at LC Swain, it also occurs at, right here down the road on Malaluka, people turning from, from Havre Hill. It happens on Lake Worth, turning on from Havre Hill, also from Swain Boulevard. I don't know if the signage needs to be posted next to the stop sign, but people need to understand that when they're turning there between a specific time zone, between, I don't know, seven and eight, let's say, that they are actually turning on to a school zone. Because that's not apparent and, and I think, so I don't know who we need to talk to. I believe Swain's our road, right?
Swain is ours.
So we can place a sign on Swain. On Lake Worth, we need to talk to the state, am I correct?
Correct.
And Malaluka, the county?
The county, correct.
And Havre Hills County too?
Correct.
Okay, so if we can start working on that, that would, that would probably be great. I mean, are there any objections to us?
There are signs on Jog and 10th Avenue also.
I think every school zone should be revisited.
Yeah. It's, it's, I guess it's when you're turning off a different road on to the school zone that people aren't seeing. They don't see that. So I think that's where we somehow, maybe like the stop signs that we have, the flashing stop signs?
Mayor, perhaps that's a conversation that should include the school district as well, because it's their police that really enforce those.
I'm all for, for getting the school police involved. I, I think it's us that enforces it. Am I correct about that on Lake Worth?
Correct, it's our PBSO, correct.
Oh, really?
Yes.
And I did want to bring up that the April, the second meeting in April is still scheduled, correct?
Yes, correct.
I just wanted to let the council know. I, I had a surgery two weeks ago to repair my meniscus. I am going in for another surgery on the 12th. I don't know if I will be in attendance for that second meeting in April because of that, that's follow-up surgery. So Deputy Mayor Tharp?
No, that'll be Deputy Mayor Noble at that point, who will chair that meeting.
Oh, wow. We switch in April?
It'll be my honor.
All right. Let's make sure that we make that a lengthy meeting, okay? Should, should we cancel the April 3rd? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You have to approve my being.
All right, that concludes my, my report. Meeting's adjourned.